Everybody online that wants to be online.
Let's see. Looks like it. Hi guys.
Alright.
Alright, one more. I tried, I bought him my telephone, or trying. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, everybody, it is six o'clock. I'd like to call the order. The regular meeting, we would start planning board for July seventeenth, two thousand twenty five. We give a forum and update for the exhibit. We have the minutes, somewhere I remember, yes, the minutes from July third. Everybody's okay with that? You know, except for this.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, so under new business, or actually under scheduled business, keep the public hearing open for Route eleven oh five, Route twenty eight. Is there anybody here for the gap issue of Route twenty eight? Yes, well. We'll keep the meeting open in case somebody else comes in. So sketch plan review. We have the estate of Betsy Stang. And this is a sketch plan review with special use permit application for timber harvests. In the R F R zoning district located at six point six, Portonburg Road, and Jeanette Lane in Mount Trevor.
Is that you? I know, like, I'm getting road gear, so.
That's what it is. So, we had four ago already because Chris got manic, we just talked, so everything looked good, so the initial cycle has been done. Take it over.
Well, I think my usual spiel is going to the app, to everybody that the planning board has for a long time now relied on the D E C best management practices for logging or timber harvesting. Because they know more than we know. And we can't really go up in the woods and check everything they do, so we've had a logger or a forester do it for us. So, I do have a knowledge property you're talking about, I care a bit, so familiar with it.
Okay.
I do know that we're actually talking about doing some subdivision, I do. Eventually, but for now, we're members, why don't you show the board with, if you have a map of it.
Sure.
Something like this, what's going on.
Okay. For that. Oh, hello. So, we're in front of the board. Estate of Betsy Stang and R S Equities. They're family members, so we're treating this as one project. Their adjacent lots, parcel twenty six, one, twelve point one, two, three, twenty six point three, dash two, sixty two point one zero zero. The property's total eighty point three nine acres. We're looking at doing a selective timber harvest and a salvage of mature hardwood and softwood. We did target heavy, the hemlock, there's quite a bit of it that's died along the road already. So, we targeted a lot of that for salvage in advance of the hemlock will be dealt with. A little over a thousand trees, a thousand twenty nine trees marked. It comes out to roughly seventeen trees an acre. There's approximately eighty trees per acre on the lot, so you're looking at about eighteen percent of the total stem count. We're removing two hundred nine thousand wood feet, or about thirty four hundred, thirty five hundred feet acre. So, D E C classified streams or wetlands on the property. On the map, you'll see there's one intermittent stream. There's an old crossing there, we plan on using that. We're gonna follow the state best management practices, we'll put a bridge in and go over it. The stream also has a no cut or machinery buffer of fifty feet. There is one small non-classified wetlands, which is in the northern part of the property. But Sonia has mapped it as a conifer swamp. This wetland area will have no harvesting or machinery in it or within fifty feet. Entire properties within the New York City watershed. The erosion control plan will follow the best management practices for forestry that the watershed act and D E C put out. We'll put in water bars, we'll put in water turnouts. We'll smooth and grade all the trails, smooth them out, clean them out. And then the landing, the same, would be graded and seeded on completion. Included in the application was a letter from the D E C stating that there is a timber rattlesnake a little over half a mile from the project. Due to that species' presence, the D E C is requiring that harvesting only occur between November first and March thirty first. So, we'll abide by that seasonal restriction. One landing will be utilized on Jeanette Lane. It's on a flat area that doesn't have many trees, so it'd be minimal clearing. There are no houses that are within sight of the landing, so visual impacts would be fairly minor. It should take, depending on the crew, ten to twelve weeks to finish. We wouldn't go past the March thirty first deadline for harvesting. If this winter doesn't work out being dry or cold, then we would defer it to next winter, so.
Okay. The landing, you said, is on Jeanette Road, so let's kind of not interfere with anybody. Oh, hours of operation, just for acres to chainsaws or usually access. Not chainsaw during the weekends, the trucks can't pick up a lot of family.
Yep. So, no cutting during the weekends. So, we call it as well.
You mentioned the bridge, I assume that's a quarter inch logway to talk about.
No, it would actually be a timber bridge that's bolted together, and they drag it out there, put it in place, and then when they're done, they just take it back, so, yep.
For numbers, questions? Yes, sir. Alright, timing wise, we're giving them a year, is it the idea that you would?
We've been doing two, just to make it, just in case.
Yeah, I mean, if there was no seasonal restriction, I could say a year.
And it may not start right away because, you know, timing wise, and then between November and March thirty first, exactly.
So, we have a winner like last winter, great. We have a winner like two winters ago, not so great, so.
Alright.
Do you want to do a appearance, or you know the area?
Yeah, it's pretty remote. But there are neighbors on Jeanette Lane, I suppose, who might wanna be aware of what's going on. So. I suppose we should.
Okay, perfect. I will, I'll call you, schedule.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
What's your availability? No, summer vacations?
Uh, we did vacation already.
Alright, alright, so, I'll leave that.
The only thing I won't be around is the sixth through the, I think it's the thirteenth or fourteenth of August.
Okay.
But, so if it's, you know, if you're gonna get switched to September, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, perfect. But we'll, we'll send it to you in one. Okay, so.
Okay, appreciate it.
Hey, worry my, tell me.
Yeah, she emailed me and said everything.
Yep, yep.
Okay. I appreciate it, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Okay. Our next face is Mitch with O D and Marlon Elizabeth's course, and it's the planning board space twenty five, section eleven oh eight A. And it's a sketch plan review with minus subdivision application for a lot line revision to swap half an acre evenly with the R C zoning district located at thirty six, thirty seven, fifteen lake view, drive in Lake Hill. And where it's being rep on this basis, and here's the map if you want to show the board. What your proposal.
To help Melissa, we probably come on this because we would doubt these options, so it is pretty confusing.
Literally, it's two lots and even swapping exact acreage of land, so the amount of acreage isn't changing at all, they're just kind of switching them?
It's a convenience switch because Marlon doesn't use the other side of the right away here. This piece right here, so the acreage was swapped with this piece of Nick, I doesn't use, it's, it's far enough away where, you know, it works out.
Does it make it so it kind of separates the driveways and they each kind of have their own map?
Yeah, I just asked about the access, is there a right of way or?
Well, the right of way is also for this neighbor, and it goes all the way back to here, so they will be sharing Marlon to here and Nick a little further.
So, do you think there would need to be a maintenance agreement on the drives, if any, two folks?
I would imagine, yeah, we would object to that, I mean.
It's usually, usually what we do, just so one doesn't get stuck up being able to get in or out.
Absolutely.
So, what happens basically with that, when we file the map, let, or when we're prepared road maintenance agreement, and we're going to carry a file map, you'll at the same time file the road maintenance agreement that was prepared by me. And then it's attached to the map, and there's no questions, like, like your poor neighbor knows. I'm just, I'm getting me.
I told her, yeah. Nick said to go for it, I mean, I can't be pushing, but I understand.
Well, put in a resolution.
Yeah.
So, the main thing I, I do still, I want to make sure it's something a well, exactly.
That's a reason.
That's okay. See any other issue other than the she acts, the driveway, driveway, the two lots.
I'll make sure it's in the resolution. Yep.
So, how long will we have to get that sorted? What's the right of way? We'll have to, sounds like we do have to hire a lawyer to draw that up.
Yeah, it's a standard, it's a standard right of way agreement, it's all kind of basic, but, you know, we have to get legalized.
And three. Are you, for this, you just need the two people signing, or do you need all three?
Well, you're not, this is the other neighbor.
No, 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 this is between there.
I was like, this is not you, I just don't want them to get confused. Um, this is between Nick, I and Torreses, and one person can get a lawyer and have it signed and filled out, and road maintenance agreement is pretty, if you find the right land, use attorney and call. Sometimes out of the ten, they have one on file, and it's pretty common dog, it's not. Yeah.
But she's using the road too, so isn't she?
The right of way is, is a three-way right of way, and all three persons. That's why I'm asking what I'm asking.
Might as well get it done once, or should we?
I think, again, civil and neighbor, so there's where the lawyers come into play. I mean, it would, yes, it would make sense, if that's the one that you're using, yes. Now you might actually end up with a fight.
Oh, wait, sorry, I want those, I'm gonna shut off.
No, seriously though, yes.
Yeah, we're, the right of way that's here was put there because this property, oh, sorry, that was put here, was put there because this property as one unit was split from this property back here, and that was the right of way that was sold. Yan Galaska then subdivided it, so there could be two buildings, and that right of way now is impacting this with the land swap. That's why I was asking what I'm asking, why I'm talking about this in a not my business thing, because technically the right of way should be a three-person right of way, and I don't know if you're doing it two persons.
Do you, are you, do you have such relationships with neighborly audience or?
I need to talk to Marlon, excited to talk to him in five months, but it's true.
I mean, that's really.
Yes.
This is a neighborly, I mean, again, can't stress enough, my, my famous phrase, an Eastman is a burden and a benefit.
Last year. No, last year, we all agreed that we were gonna sit down and do the right of way, because it wasn't wanted.
So, this might be perfect timing.
But, that's why I was asking you to finally question. We're all willing, but now it sounded like there was like work that we weren't gonna jump to.
Ray, you have a question?
No.
Any more members of questions? Get a right of way.
We're gonna put it in the, in the reservation.
Okay, so, I guess you guys, when they come back with the right of way, we're good, right?
Well, do you want to, it's a lot line revision, you want to wait for the reviewing or a little public hearing?
Because there's other people on that road, we better have a public hearing.
And this, will absolutely require work needed within the resolution. No, I'll call, I'm sorry, well.
Okay, aren't you the only other person on the road?
Yes. Well.
I hope we're good.
Or a few.
I'm the first.
One, two, and then.
I'm a servant.
There are two people.
He's two people.
Okay.
So, there's a husband and wife.
Right, okay.
A man, Nick, and then he's a servitor, she's a neighbor. Using that, that, did you not see my colors? It's the only way I can make sense of this. Um, so really, again, it's a lot line revision, even ingredient, so that's all up to you guys. Is public hearing or?
Well, it doesn't impact anybody else around it except for the sector road. Everybody should have a right to know what's going on on the road. Yeah, everybody agree?
I don't know what. Both around it. I mean, just there.
Yeah, it's like the drive, right, or do you need to twelve? I'm sorry.
There's only three people on the way to drive, so I don't want a public hearing to bring out the people who's coming.
Very rarely do you see ones with the neighbor. You get a lot of like point zero zero two, you know, you're like, move a shed, point zero zero three, like, this was impressive, kind of. Your call, guys.
I mean, it's not, it doesn't affect the surrounding neighborhood, it's not the access, and it's.
Yep.
If, you just have to make sure that everybody has access to their land, I mean, that's.
Exactly.
That's all that we want to be sure of.
And you can, I'll go check. I'll word it, so make sure the access, we'll put those words on there also. Okay.
Right.
Hello?
Yeah, we'll, I'll have a check.
Grayden just made a motion.
Yeah, I, you know, because if we don't, you didn't tell us about it, it gets tested.
Wait, are, do we, wait, where are we doing it? We're getting two different answers.
For you guys.
Most go.
Who else, who else is up there?
I used to live in White House, that's by money.
Who else is up there that much?
That was Zoe's house, it's no longer in her possession.
And bring out some.
The other one, no, nobody else.
No, this, this and this are two, they're both under Beverly Harris and Russell Victoria Kristoff.
This is all.
Yes. They're.
These are all excellent.
Yes.
And honestly, she's here in support of this because she wants to figure out the road maintenance agreement.
I also, I'm gonna shut up. I also have worked with some of the stuff for helping flagging attack.
From the survey report, do the maps clear?
The road exists, right?
Well, I think I can answer from Peter and James Grayden, wait, you want to make a motion, Jen, but I'm, okay. So, Bill. My next meeting I will have, which I don't think is until. August, February, I'll have a resolution, reference for the board to approve. That's fine, I'll email you, and you can, I'll have a work time access.
Okay.
It's very hard for her.
Yes, I've got time to go.
You cannot have this map because you have. You don't have to come, you have an audience, so we'll take the board, please.
We'll get it.
Perfect.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is a discussion. We'll go out about the proposed to be overly amended to the document, a comment for maybe four two thousand twenty five. This is a review of the discussion that were written here with the zoning revision committee.
Yes, so I, so I am here as chair of the zoning revision committee. I made this to, if you come, I, I love it. So, yeah, yes, I mean, we all have a little talent, but I'm here as chair of the zoning revision committee. So, so we had sent you a couple of iterations of the law, and the, and the latest iteration, and thank you very much for responding each time. And the latest iteration, you had sent, we forgot from Melissa, the memorandum, and then the zoning revision committee reviewed your input. And so, I think a lot of them were straightforward. We incorporated most, a couple we didn't, if you want to review the ones we didn't incorporate, we can explain the reasons why it was in the text we sent you. I don't know, but, but the real reason I'm here is because the item that you said no to was the item that talked about how to maintain. And so, my concern is that if, you know, and that's okay that you don't like these proposed words of how to maintain. But I do think people need to be able to, and this is item, I'll tell you what I'm looking at. I'm looking at, the item in the law, item eighty two sixty six, six standards, proposed code, we have A one H was what we had proposed for how to maintain. And what my point is, is, I, I, show, show and tell here. So, so I have a maple tree in my yard, and as you can see, if you want to look, and sorry for this, the tune is not looking so good, or wherever it is. I have little maple trees, so this year I have nine little maple trees that fell into the pot. So, technically speaking, if somebody can't maintain their yard, and we say, you're in the scenic overlay, you can't take out any trees, well, those are all, I got nine things you're turning to trees. I mean, people need to be able to, you know, we can't just say, you can't take out any trees if you're in the scenic overlay, because your maple tree drops a thousand seeds, and now all of a sudden you're in a deal. So, or your oak tree drops, how many acorns, I, I, I mean, we have to say something about maintenance. And I'm okay that you didn't like the proposed word.
I think the board was more concerned about. It really falling on them, I mean, like.
That's your key idea.
Yes, and I think like, you know, where start with the zoning enforcement officer, and then how do we draw lines and where, what lines do we put? And I think that that was really the big issue.
But it's the question going on on the maintenance, and the whole thing about property owners being able to maintain their views. It seems almost impossible to, to enforce or to monitor. But if the code itself says in the very beginning, do not allow the house, the buildings to be viewed. And so.
As much as possible, because you're allowed to build on the building, a piece of property, but the building, basically, building, yeah.
It seems to me that should be enough, to say.
Well, and the other, the other questions are, as was brought up to me, it, it, I mean, some properties were built before the zoning law was put in place, but if a property was built since the zoning law, they probably have a site plan that says what the trees are supposed to, you know, where the tree is supposed to be. So, so there's a couple of thoughts of maintenance. One maybe has to do with what site plan got approved. The way, I don't know what you do then to have a property that was built before the zoning laws were in place, they might not have a site plan, but you probably do have a site plan if something was built since the zoning law was approved. I don't know with, whether we just say, do what your site plan said. And I don't know whether it's true or not true, and Peter, you, you've been, I've been on the planning board for two years, you know, you, you've been on it forever, so you're the expert, I just, you know, I'm just trying to put two and two together and figure out answers. But is going by the site plan a logical thing to say, whatever your site plan says you're allowed to do?
Those are approved, yes, definitely.
So, 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 so one maintenance comment, statement might be, follow your site plan.
If you have, if you have.
I know there's only a handful of real site plans we have.
I know.
Right, I mean, that's just more, there's maybe five that we really require drone photography, yeah.
I mean, there were some, we actually located trees, there were some, we had the whole board come out here. But lately, we've been asking for drone photography to kind of show what was there.
Well, 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 yeah, yeah, and Connor is, Connor, like, is working on trying to get a baseline, yeah, he's trying to work on getting an estimate, so the board can go forward with trying to, trying to actually hire a drone photographer to get a current look. But, but I do think maintenance, we need to have certain words for ma, I believe the revised law needs to say something about maintenance. The whole idea of the scenic overlay law is to make things more restricted than they are today, because people are going nuts today, and they're doing things that we don't like. So, we want to have a better viewscape and, but, but at the same time, again, as I said three times already, people, I believe, need to know what they're allowed to do to maintain their property. So, I'll put whatever words you all think makes sense to maintain the property, but they need to have some guidance of what they're allowed to do, not allowed to do.
Well, as the end of the, the end of this report, what it's clear is that to revise the code, what the, not the code, the pamphlet that we have on the same floor. So, there's a, something where people can look at what exactly we expected to be done in the same.
Sure, but the pamphlet, I guess, two things. One is, I think you were just asking of the town board for funding, but you would then be hiring a person to do it, so I, I understand the pamphlet idea is the law would be in your court to make it happen, as provided you got funding. But even the pamphlet's not a law. So, the goal of the zoning revision committee is to improve laws where we realize they need to be improved. And like you had said at the beginning, well, it, it ought to say at the beginning something about what the expectation is, but I'm not sure if we have words to.
I think Laura's looking at, is here because she wants to know what acceptable language is for you guys, the planning board, who deal with this all the time. When something gets cut that shouldn't get cut, when a viewscape is ruined, what words can we go on that, I mean, it.
To give the do's.
Baseline, yeah, I don't know, yeah.
And the reason why, the reason why we proposed the S U P, and I'm, I'm sorry, Judith's not here, because I thought I had talked with Judith before we did this language, but I'm not remembering. I remember I was in, those, I was in her office, and which was there, and I had, and I thought at some point I talked with Judith before we put this in there, and I wish she were here today to talk to, glad I talked to her, since I got this response to say, hey. But the whole reason with the S U P idea would be, the S U P idea would be that if somebody wants to maintain their property, they've got to come to this board, and they, and just like whenever you do resolutions, and when you give permits for things, your S U Ps, you provide a list of requirements and say, you know, if you're gonna be able to do this, we're allowing you to do this as long as you follow this rule, this rule, this rule, this rule, it would give you complete control over what they are and aren't allowed to do in your planning board language, in S U P language. And the thought being that if people want to maintain their property and not get in trouble, they should come to this board and get an S U P, so that they would get clear language back, and they would not be confused. I, I hate to just take item H out, because then it says, hey, you cut down a tree, you got all this fine, well, this is a, this is a tree. That is a tree. That is a tree. I mean, we can't have a law that just says if you cut down a tree, you're gonna get a big fine, because there, seeds are dropping every year.
The basic quote says minimize the exposure of the development, the property value. Minimizes up to a curvitation, I suppose.
Could we require them to have a, a site plan, what, that identifies significant trees?
If it's a new construction, it's in the middle of the woods. But another question is, if people already have homes in the scenic overlay long ago, and they had great views, and now the trees are growing, and they want to keep their view going, by cutting those trees, are they exposing the house to the view? I don't know how you monitor that, I really don't.
I mean, unless you say something like. Broke and overbroke, or something like that. The, you know, he's the chief that, versus like, what was there before?
Which we are missing.
But I mean, I understand what, what he's saying, is that, you know, every year, on our prop, our own properties, we battle like, oh, wait, that wasn't there yesterday. Gets out my window, I mean, yeah, we did.
Absolutely.
It's not always about starting a review, it's just about, you know, keeping your. It's not always about starting on your view, it's just about, you know, keeping your so like getting your windows.
I think what it's, they often really have to be a new development, new construction. I don't know how much, because everything new will require a site plan and all the requirements when they come to sort of playing board and especially use permits. But existing homes upon a tumor of trees comes to the planning board to cut a couple of branches, I don't know.
Well, 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 but, and, and there, and there we are, because even this says, and I'm looking in here, item G stands with the scenic overlay district. Item A is, are the issues of a building permit. So anybody coming who needs a building permit is going to be in front of you. So we're not worried about those, but the people that already live in their homes, I don't know what to say about guidance, uh, because we've got, if you're.
Can there be some sort of verbiage about like maintenance and upkeep?
Well, that's.
I, I, I'm not, I'm hoping like, yeah, like.
Cause I'm hoping to be able to tell people something.
You know, cause I mean, Butch needs something to go on too, so I mean.
But because it says prohibited is non, all non-essential tree cutting. And we do at some point tell, you know, non-essential should be issued to having, to mean having no fundamental impact on the safety and buildability of a lot. So again.
I mean, if, if a tree's fallen on my roof, I'm cutting it down, I'm not trying.
Well, sure, sure, sure.
I don't.
But, but when all these things drop on the ground and, and now I've got nine, in this little pot here, there's nine.
I appreciate your plan.
So, so, so.
Visual.
Yeah, so, so there's nine maple trees right here. And this says, um, all non-essential tree cutting is prohibited. Well, you, you don't need to, you know, I, I don't need to take these out to have my house. My house already exists, they're not blocking my driveway.
I mean, I feel like people should be doing maintenance for things actually becoming trees.
But isn't this a tree already?
Well, yeah, the thing that growing fast, the thing that belongs to my springy porch, which is this tall.
Right.
I cut that, it's going to become, it's going to rip off my springy porch. But I don't wait for it to become a tree to then have the property, whether that tree.
And I look for definition, I look for a definition of tree online, I couldn't find a definition of tree. I maintain that assumption, true.
Maybe, maybe that's what you need though, maybe, maybe like dimensions of a tree, I mean, I. No matter what, it's interpretation and.
I mean, if you're cutting that, sometimes it may fall pretty tall, it's, it's gonna.
That's even too.
But you have to kind of be, you have to kind of be a good part of your project.
I, I, you should say, we're all using common sense here, but the issue that I have as a, as the chair of the zoning revision committee, it is, we need to take common sense and put it into language. Because we have to have language and bridge guidance, and that's my opinion. And the way the language stands today, if I pull those out, I think I'm going to get in trouble.
Do you want me to, I'm just kidding, but we sold them out.
I don't, I don't live in the scenic overlay, I'm not going to get in trouble.
Sorry Laura, I just.
But if I live in the scenic overlay, it's like real beating on trees. So, so I, so that's, so that's my question. And I thought if I challenge people, again, if they, if they, if they come to you for a building permit because it's only new, they're going to have a site plan. If they already have a building, they maybe have a site plan on file, they maybe don't have a site plan on file. They maybe have a site plan that everybody's ignored.
I mean, we do, we do ask when it comes down to trees, how many trees are coming down? And sometimes, some cases it's depicted within and some it's not, it's a honey, if they're not, it's very minimal.
I think all you have to say is that, you know, basic property maintenance involving, you know, new growth and, you know, um, overgrowth is obviously nothing becoming planningable. Now, if you wait ten years and you suddenly have actual trees where they used to be, um, of your view, you might have been viable, because we might have been able to go out there and look at it and say, now wait.
What about obstructing the view state?
Are you just starting to clear type here?
What about, yeah, like the words obstructing the view state. That's the whole thing of the scenic overlay today is obstructing the view state. If your plant cutting obstructs the view shape, first an S U P is required.
But if you're just doing your basic maintenance of a year or two and just clearing out some of those new growth, you know, that's, that's nothing. How would we, you know, how would we do it? I don't, I can't.
What do you think, does that help?
Well, it.
Or dequalify, or whatever, but you know, that's.
Yeah, so, so it does, it, it does help. Um, so I'll go back to the zoning revision committee and we'll kind of bounce around this approach that just gives some general guidance for new growth, overgrowth, we'll have to put some guidance around what new growth is. Um, property maintenance, um, but as you, pretty clearly, you don't want people coming here. But, but if somebody has water.
Well, the problem is if you put it off for ten years, say, you know, then you will starve you because you are taking down trees that people don't used to seeing there. And so you really need to kind of be a good, you know, the caretaker of your property.
Wow, absolutely.
And I don't think Peter must necessarily say that it doesn't want to come here. I think his point is with new developments, new houses.
New law is completely.
Exactly, and I think that's really what his, his key point is. I understand your concern, I guess, I agree.
But the other question I want to ask though, is there are some people that will contend that some people have gorgeous views today and weren't supposed to have that gorgeous view. So we're kind of really saying, hey, if you've already gotten it new, you get to maintain it. Um, even if, even if they weren't supposed to have the gorgeous view, even if, even if people from two twelve will see your house and they weren't supposed to, we're, we're kind of in a way putting this to have it at a starting point of now.
Right.
And if you're okay with the fact that they have a starting point now, it, it is what it is. Um, so, so we'll focus on the do's and don'ts of maintenance, is kind of what you think, we're just focusing on this.
Makes sense. It just hasn't, it's always careless on things you're far, I take it from the time, like, say, okay, what do you do? Like, yeah, I mean, quite, I'd push them to.
We are in a town where eighty-five percent of the town time neighbors try to be involved in what's happening in their, I mean, really, seriously, like, a lot of like, you know, meeting here and stats town is, is neighbor complaints and, and, you know, that, that's how a lot of violations end up in place.
And this is all for existing properties.
So.
And, and not the ones that are coming to you versus, that people coming to you from new stuff.
We are in fact, yeah, we've gone and said.
Right, yeah, 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 absolutely, existing properties. Okay.
So my other lead issue is, it's, uh, it's D, I'm not sure what it means, but anyway, called the prohibition of development along and projecting above ridge lines. So that's saying you are not allowed to develop along projected ridge line.
Well, okay, so I gotta find where you want.
Is that law, you're not allowed to.
Five of ten.
Prohibition.
Five of ten. Five of ten. So tell, tell, tell me.
C, D, B.
So that if the landlord owns the lot up there and he goes through the building department, he don't want to build a house, and they say, no, you're on a ridge line, can't do it.
But well, we'll understand that everything in black is there to deck.
No, it says that, it says that.
It says that, yeah, so everything in black is there to deck, so we were trying to strengthen things. So what you're saying, yeah, the prohibition of that law.
That's it, because that's saying somebody who bought a lot to build a house up there and all of a sudden they say, nope, we can't do that.
That's been there a long time, that, that provision.
Since they know it.
Yeah.
They didn't know when they buy a property.
I mean, prohibition means no, that means no.
Well, it.
There's no.
But, but if some, but if somebody has bought a lot that is zoned, that they can build on it and they buy, you know, if they rent out of R three or R eight, I'm putting in R eight, I'm allowed to build in R eight. But the only place I can build on this big, big lot is right here, because everything else is lost, deep slope or whatever. Uh, cause it's saying we want to discourage development, does she comment? Uh, uh, well, I guess we had originally, um, I'd have to go back and read the law because we apparently used the word discouragement after what it was. So, so if you look at the left side of this, this is what it looked like before we added the latest stuff and the latest stuff is in red. So all of the black was in the law as it stands today online. The blue was in the first cast of what we recommended. The red is in, after we decided we want to just address maintenance, we did some more. So, so the black is, the current law of that. The, the red, um, so we put, um, yeah, the prohibition development and projected above ridge lines and the restriction development, so the development is visually, yeah, so, so that, but we left the black words so that development is as visually inconspicuous as possible because it may be that you have a right to build on this piece of property you bought because it's a buildable lot. And the only, if the only place you can put things is so you can see it, it is what it is. You want it to be as visually inconspicuous as possible. We can't change the law to tell people they can no longer build with one buildable lot. So, so the black, we didn't change the black.
But our scenic overlay code says you can't build conspicuously on a mountain side. And this says it's prohibited. Now, we just okayed a lot, somebody to build a house on top of California, it's clearly going to be as visible as anything could possibly be. Well, how did we just say no, the, the town has to buy the property?
Yes, so what do you ask me to do with D?
The, the word prohibition means you can't build, so that means if, if the landlord goes up there and looks at the site and they say, well, you're renting, no, can't build here.
But it says it's, it, it is as visually inconspicuous as possible.
That's definitely prohibited.
Well, it's all in the same sentence. So it's saying you're prohibiting that, but, you know, you, you're prohibiting that, you want to make it as visually conspicuous as possible, so you're prohibiting that with a purpose of making it as visually conspicuous as possible, but we're not telling people they can't do it at all. And the old law, the current law isn't saying you can't do it at all either because the, this, these words are in the black and they are in the current law. So I, if you were asking me to tell somebody that they can't build, you know, now you're talking about a lawsuit. If somebody can build on, or they bought this property.
That's what prohibition means.
What's that?
Prohibition means that they can't do it.
Correct, but if you continue to read the sentence, it says so that.
It says you can't, prohibition says you can't, just, yeah, that's a few.
You're, you're correct, but, but, and we didn't change that law, that's not, that's not, that's not verbiage that we added.
I think that what Peter's asking is that you get rid of that word prohibition.
Do you want us to get rid of the word prohibition? What, or, I, I, because we have to still let them do it, you know? But I, I think the word prohibition is to catch people's eye. And you're right, that then we do say, first of all, we say you can't do it. It's maybe an oxymoron is what you're saying, right? You're saying you can't do it, then you're saying you can do it.
Because in a lot of cases, not everything, but in a lot of cases, when they have that lot on the mountain and they got that spot where they ran the exit grade too, they also land in the back way to build with no roof.
Do, do, do we want to say?
I mean, when you say you can't build there, you've got other land to build on.
Would you rather I say avoidance instead of prohibition, so it's not, maybe I say the avoidance in development?
That's better.
You, you, so you prefer a void, avoidance, prohibition? Okay.
But in your scenario, we would approve building in the back of the property. Who cares if they have it here or not?
We have, we have at times said it needs to go five feet back, we, we, there's been, yes.
But it, it kind of countered the whole point. They spent a million dollars to buy that lot to build a house that could be seen by everybody in the village. That's the whole point.
And it doesn't mean that they had to take our recommendation, they can fight us on it too.
Yeah.
So, so you were, so we changed avoidance, prohibition to avoidance, it's not so much of an oxymoron. It's still making the point is if you can get away from the ridge, get away from the ridge. So that's what it's saying, if you can't get away from the ridge, get away from the ridge. Um, and so if we say avoidance, it's not like an oxymoron, because we're not saying prohibit it then.
Or anyways.
It's a little bit more.
Or anyway, it cannot be.
Yeah, so it's a little, it's a little more realistic. The avoidance of development along our projected ridge lines, the restriction development of the visual, yeah. And then we say avoidance both places. Uh, not prohibition.
Maybe here's a little better, yeah.
Is that, so, so that's more realistic, it's not much of an oxymoron. Okay, so we'll do that and then we're, um, and which, we're focusing on maintenance, do's and don'ts of that and that. Yeah, focus on maintenance.
The other big issue with the scenic overlay are roads, driveways, roads.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, if we keep the gray, if we keep the, what the town code is the gray, it's going to eliminate a lot of development amount. Right now, well, God, you know, California doesn't need a meat code. That road doesn't need a meat code at all.
Yeah, well, well, are you asking to change the scenic overlay law regarding the draperys?
That, that, that all driveways in the scenic overlay have to meet town code, which is really difficult.
But, 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 but we've never said they didn't have to meet town codes, so why do we have to say they do have to meet?
Really, because what's happened is that there's cow pass and donkey trails up the side of the mountains. And people go, oh, the road's already here, yeah.
But, but, yeah, but, but I, I hate to.
And where can they develop because of that?
I, I feel odd putting in the, in the law, follow that law over there, because the law over there already exists. So we're, we're not, we're not giving them the ability to ignore a law.
No, but in the future development, we try to pace it on, on top of the mountain with the driveway. They're not anywhere meat code, but it was approved.
But, 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 but you're approved by the, or building department?
You have one that, oh, not the driveways like that.
Yeah, approved by the building department.
Yeah, and so when there's a fire up there and the fire department can't get up there and it burns half the mountain down, we're going to wonder why are we allowed that?
I, I, I hear you. My issue is if the code, if the driveway part of the law code already says you can't do it, I'm not sure why I need to say in the scenic overlay law, you can't do it because it's already in the code. The fact that the building department is ignoring it, it's.
Well, I've been doing, I've run through these actual old driveways and old lying roads.
Existing, pre-existing.
And they say, well, the code's already here.
Right, but the town code is already there.
Yeah.
Now, I.
Because it's meat code, then it shouldn't be approved.
Well, I know that, but that's, but, but the purpose of this is making changes to the scenic overlay law to make it better. And if the driveway code already exists and people are ignoring it, I don't see a reason to put it in here.
All right, you got a point.
But, but, but it's already in the law.
It's already in the law.
Uh, 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 addressing enforcement would be the thing to do there, I think. If it's already in the law and people are ignoring it, then that shouldn't, I don't know how to bring it up. I don't know if you're asking me to bring it up. Now, I'll be a channel member for a minute, I'm not sure if you're asking me to bring it up with somebody to fix that problem.
No, just to, just to, you're right, it's already in the code. We're just to make sure that people understand when they buy a land and a house, the driveway has to meet code.
Yeah, well, it doesn't make sense to have a conversation with Butch and say, hey, you know, people are assuming they can do this and they should because it's not in the code, so they can't.
This is the tricky part, this board is up against, because people are going to be buying land in these mountains and they are going to be developing it, and if we stick to our guns, there's going to be problems.
And this really isn't Butch thing because subdivision doesn't bother him. So this is people creating lots that were already there that want to come and subdivide and there's no blocking one. So this really isn't about enforcement, this is about subdivision free blocks.
But, but they have to come to you if they're going to subdivide.
Yes, that's my point, that's why it's not a, it's not a zoning, that isn't building. That's Peter's concerns with surveys, a subdivision, a history.
But, but then you can say when you're subdivision, when you, when you allow a subdivision, you can say just what you said to me is, by the way, you're not allowed to use this cow pass because it doesn't need.
Right, I mean, we've had a few lots come to us that have no access to people.
So you can.
Over years of time, for no lack of anybody's fault.
Okay, so was there anything else, we, we, we incorporated most, a couple of things we didn't incorporate. Was there anything else that we did not incorporate that you wanted to talk about?
No, the, 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 the main thing is to have a baseline photographic.
You want a baseline.
Baseline of these, of what they look like now, so.
You guys had a great conversation going through, you know.
Yeah, and, and, and I know Connor is, Connor's looking at, so.
If you could get David Lacks or somebody to, you know, take those photographs, that would be great.
Well, I think, I think the, the way it's going to be, I'm going to answer. Um, so I think, so what Bill has asked for, but because i- if something is a certain price, it has to go out to bid. So Steph wants to get an estimate, so the film was whether or not it has to go out to bid. So, so Steph wants to get an estimate, which Connor's trying to get an estimate for David Lacks. So that then we'll have a number, two things, one, Bill and open has to go out to bid, and number two, the board can borrow one dollar spent in the money, which I sure hope you do, because I think we need to see. So, so we have kind of a two-prong thing here. One is, I'm trying to get the law where you're happy with it and the Z R C. So I've got to go back to the Z R C, you'll see it again because we're getting the word prohibition and restriction with the board, that would be easy. We're going to mull away things that you said for maintenance and figure out what's the good verbiage for maintenance. So we'll have to pass that back to you and see what, you know, because we, we can't from a town board, we're not ready to go to a public hearing until you agree with the verbiage. So right now, um, you know, we're under those two things, the one's easy, that how to change the maintenance verbiage so that it gives some guidance, but, you know, that you're comfortable with it. So you'll, you'll, you'll see another copy in your inbox.
We appreciate you coming to talk to us.
I appreciate you inviting me to talk to you.
We're glad that you're getting this code worked over because it's really important to protect the side of these mountains. This code should help, I hope.
Yeah, and I think it helped me like my Shelly Chell.
It was perfect, I really do want to win it for you.
I think we got, but, but I thought I'd drive up to the scenic overlay, we can do it here. But now we're not up talking about that, so, all right, well, thank you. Thanks so much, and, and thank you for everything each of you does, because this is such a important board. And, um, I know because I was on it and I know, appreciate Peter's leadership on it, appreciate Melissa, you're holding down the fort. Appreciate everybody, because it's a big deal. It's a big deal and doing the right thing by the, by the town. You know, you have the individuals want one thing, but you want to do it straight for the town and you always have to make some decisions somehow about which way you're going to, you know, move on things.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I'm on my way, I was immediate, I was this week, I didn't send, so.
Well, we're gonna go get your force. I gotta change stuff back if we need.
I'll tell you the back of the dress.
So we're, we're good.
Yeah, yeah.
So anyway, thanks, my.
Thank you so much, Laura.
And we'll be in touch, I'm sure, there we go, and now you're on to your next conversation.
Well, that is under, I'm saying, this is a draft of a resolution for which our states, which, uh, we have members of the board, and myself included, that can't say, this is. I think, I, I'll speak to what you guys can speak yourself, but, uh, to me, it's up to the building department to say, it's approved, it's approved.
Peter, I'd like to speak if I may.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Hello, board, hi, I know all of you, I don't even rate on that grant. And keep your service, I'll be. Um, Butch's letter to you, the planning board, said he recommends very strongly that we can't decree it, that all access be through Woodstock Estates Drive, not through Schoolmaker Land. If you don't put that strongly into the draft proposal, I'm sure the absentee landlord will, you know, make Schoolmaker Land the access, there will be construction, there'll be trucks inbound constantly, it will screw up Schoolmaker Land in a way that hasn't ever been screwed up before. We've lived there for a long time, most of them live there for thirty, forty, fifty years. This guy lives in Florida, is a property owner. Some of those buildings back there seem to look like they're corroded, so like, it's not the fanciest place in the world, but it's, it's a service. But there's no way to access that property except from Schoolmaker Lane, but all the buildings are accessed through Woodstock Estates Drive. The only reason there's any kind of a curb cut there, which is an efficient curb cut, it's never existed, is because there's a tennis court. So the use proposal is to change the use of tennis court to the use of a permanent storage structure. Whether that's legal in HR or not is a different argument, but Butch strongly recommended that any access be done through Woodstock Estates Drive. You don't say that in the draft proposal, so I wanna ask you, as a citizen and a taxpayer in a residential school, why privilege this absentee landlord over the concerns of an immigrant? That's my question.
Well, uh, eventually it never came up, the access was never actually.
Well, it was in.
Came up, but what we were just proposing was this building, it's a roof over containers.
Well, Peter, I would call that a building.
Well, whatever.
It requires footings, drainage, you know, column supports. I mean, what else, you gotta have walls.
Well, your question is the access to it, which is something that we.
You see, I don't disagree, cuz I'm, I'm a property owner, it's got, I think people have the right to do it from all the property, it really do. But this is never access to Woodstock Estates, that was always through Woodstock Estates Drive.
But now you're, now you're bordering on civil case, civil law, and who has access to that road is not really our fervor.
It may come back, but what I'm saying to you is that currently, the only access to Woodstock Estates properties that are residential is through Woodstock Estates Drive. And this is the recommendation, not the decree, the recommendation that Butch made in his letter to you.
But I could see their lawyer saying, well, we, he was got no access to tennis courts since nineteen sixty-two.
Sure, and he's setting a law, you put a tennis court, but now you're changing use, and that's his own verbiage, and that's a use variance, not a change variance, not an area variance, whatever. So to me, it's a use variance, and if they wanna argue, yeah, we're gonna use that for something else, that's a use variance, that is a question that, as we know, ZK gives out, area variance is like candy.
But it didn't come to here for a use variance, it came to here as a site planner review.
Understand that.
To, for the, that just suggests maintenance.
I understand, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, you guys aren't a culture, I'm just trying to give you a broader picture.
So if they want to use that as a tennis court, you know, we're okay?
I, hey, I used to play tennis on that court.
No, I'm trying to give the access.
Cuz I'm looking, but I got mixed it. So, yeah, the tennis court is fine, but a structure, and that, you've been there, you've been to the site, that's ugly, it's sin, those are rusty old containers, it looks like shit. And the tennis court is verbiage, so it looks like an empty lot in a city with crap out of it. And doesn't help the neighborhood at all, now, without putting like codicil, you mustn't go through Woodstock Estates Drive, you're saying, yeah, ruin that whatever you want, have your own backs, build a bit of shit. This is, this is how I feel as a citizen and a resident, could make a comment, than being an all-inventor, being disrespected by the board because they're not taking into consideration.
But but again, I would have to come back to the point that before, it's with the site planner review of this roof over these things. And if the question is, how do you access that, and they say, to their road, then civil, I, we.
Okay, and maybe civil, and I'm not letting you guys make these decisions, but I'm saying to you that Butch in his letter to you specifically for this case, said, he recommends strongly, he uses strongly, that all access be through Woodstock Estates Drive. And he recommends that as provision, along with the other stuff you mentioned with these plantings and, you know, previous to the master.
So it's also like oppressive in, okay, like.
It's always present.
How the board handles site planner review applications?
Always present.
Exactly, so they handled this like a site planner review, this wasn't a subdivision with access, this wasn't a new house that required a driveway curbs. This was existing, this is pre-existing, had a history, I'm just adding some points on.
I'm not pulling the board. I'm really not, I'm not pulling the board at all, so I mean, don't, don't need to be interested, I'm not attacking.
Were they permitted those containers?
No.
I don't know, I could, all four of them.
It is legal, it is legal for them to be there, it just prompted for them to have a site plan and then on the site.
They've been there for some years, like ninety-four, probably.
I mean, questionable, but it even comes under site planner review.
Well, it may not, but this to me is a change of use, so there's other issues that maybe not specifically remains the planning board.
But on their entire property, they're allowed to have storage, there is.
No question about that.
So they're.
Access, but why did you not put Butch's recommendation in the draft proposal? To have the access be only through Woodstock Estates Drive and nowhere else, because that's what he said, and you've seen with Butch. I do assume.
And work. Well, I guess my, I have a couple of questions, one is, what do you, what do you think is gonna be happening there, that is gonna be?
I think you're gonna have things they do already, playing stuff in and out, in and out, in and out, all the time, in wash.
Well, is that the storage repair?
It is, which now they wanna put a roof over and make a structure, it's already ugly, it's sin, we've done that, I don't think that's gonna make it last.
Well, I don't, I can judge it if that's a good spot. Acting like they're a woodcar.
True, and if, you know, it's also, it, I guess they're right.
But I think, I mean, I do remember there being a very tentative, like, drive off of Schoolmaker, part of those task cards.
Well, there's access for sure, I was gonna say, I was just playing tennis.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just filling in the blanks.
But it doesn't go anywhere near.
No, my other question is, so I'm not familiar with the rest of the property that.
Oh, I kind of wondered.
Well, it's like we did, so where, how, how would they, well, we were lost, we went to Woodstock Estates Drive.
So you can't get there from Woodstock Estates.
So.
You cannot.
Your, that, my question was, is there any way for them to actually access that part of their property from Woodstock Estates?
Only by the line road over the classic truck stream.
Through the wellens.
Through the truck stream.
This is what.
Yeah.
What, what is it, what has the, what is the status of Schoolmaker Land?
It, it's a town road.
It's a town road, so they're gonna say they have access on a town road?
They could say that, but then again, this is a change of use, you know, and they're, they're.
They're gonna have to take that up if it was.
I think this will lose, but we don't fight it because I think this is wrong.
We weren't proposing the change of use, that wasn't, we weren't, uh, the change of use wasn't put in the law.
Peter, I'm not, I, I was on the planning board, I'm not attacking the planning board, I'm really not, I mean, you guys, I really love what you do, I'm happy that you do it, I'm glad you're here, I'm just saying, as a citizen, I think that, my question to this, why would you not put restricted information into the draft proposal and see what happens? Why would you make that decision in contravention of?
Well, I, I, here's the answer to your question, because as you said, it was, it was approved by the zoning enforcement off the first place.
It was approved with recommendations that you didn't put in the proposal. So, yeah, no question that you proved it, and no question it's not legal.
It's a suggestion to kick it back to review it with, we already did, okay.
No, my question is, why did you not follow Butch's recommendations? That's my question, and I don't have an answer yet. And if you wanna say you didn't read it, you forgot, that's okay too, I mean, we made mistakes, you know, a lot of things fall from the grass, but I think this is important.
Yeah, I have to, I don't actually remember him saying.
It's in the.
Access it separately.
Yeah, it's in the letter, it says it should not, you know, it's just.
But on the other hand, if it's a public road or a town road, I don't know how you could stop somebody from that.
Well, you know, Article seventy, if you're right, comes out, that's all I can tell you. But, I mean, before we go to that point, I would prefer to see the planning board follow the zoning office's recommendations, put that in the draft proposal, and then we'll see what happens. But that should be what's in the proposal. Otherwise, you're saying, you know better than the building inspector, you're ignoring.
I would say, I have time to say to Butch, I'm, I'm not sure you could say that a town road can make laws about access, or that we can make decisions.
I agree.
Butch, if he made this recommendation, he should explain why he made that recommendation, and, and maybe remind you of the Peter Town Road, what his position is for why he thinks that it can override that. I, cuz I personally don't, so. That's somewhere.
I think he's saying that, I mean, from what I know about the building code, that basically this property has one drive access, not two. And then all the buildings, all the structures are on the other side of the street. So if they want to build something on the other side of the street, it could be houses for that, they still have to have a road on Woodstock Estates Drive, because you can't have two different entrances, and this is like a.
One, I did.
You can have this, but you didn't have your property set by a street, right?
It's all wellens, yeah.
Doesn't.
You don't, there's.
I'm just saying, like, I have a secondary road that's on my house, that's kind of where it comes from, the road, that's huge all the time, it's there.
Yeah, I thought.
So if I was something called like a huge setup, you're like, wow.
But if we had a screen.
It's my way down.
If it had a screen between you and then, and all your stuff is inside the screen, that's a different situation, that's what.
So are there like a million trucks hanging out on Schoolmaker Way to access that lot right now?
I don't live that close to it, cuz the girls live across street, it happens a lot.
You know what I mean?
But it, it comes down to a basic situation, which this is a civil case. It's a civil case, who has the right of way to access that, and that's not something that we can talk, because if you tell, if you tell Woodstock Estates that the only way they can get to their property is to go through the wellens across the street, which you can't.
Of course you.
They're in a civil case to say, well, you're blocking us from our property.
There's already a bridge across that street, that's not a.
Yeah, it's a bridge. It's a wellen, you can't give it a hundred feet back.
I mean, uh.
And the wellen itself is not a hundred foot.
For one moment, please, on this, could I, could I please interrupt your, in this, I don't want to.
I know.
I know, wait, which now?
Jeff Moran?
Moran, nice to meet you, I'm sorry, I'm.
I'm sorry.
Um, we had our first, um, environmental commission meeting last night, um, and I'm just going to ask everyone to please pause after the discussion, it wasn't recorded except by me on my phone, I can't post it, but maybe after this, before you, uh, before we're talking about civil cases and anything that's going to cost this town money, just because of that discussion, um, maybe I can share some information with you. Yeah, okay, cuz it would be smart.
Well, let me bring this back to the issue for the board that we guys solved, uh, board members, I guess we have two options, we can send it back to the building, the EOs, the building inspector, the Butch, and explain what our issue is.
And I would like to.
Explain that.
It's, it's, yeah, totally.
He said to access it, not from this road, but there's no other way to get there. I don't know what else we can do.
You can move this sheds to the other side of the east stream.
Be good.
Keep it as a, that's more of a tennis court.
We could put a scorchedeys and.
I mean, it's, you know, it's plenty of property there.
So what do you guys think for education, guys, if you're, send it back to Butch and the board?
Education, just to explain this.
I don't know, just.
Be aware of all sides of this stuff, like, what, what is thinking, saying, same, same, yes, so.
Yep, I, I, that's all I can, at least, is other way to talk in a civil case.
That's, I'm gonna add one.
As, as a former supervisor and a taxpayer, I do not want to sometimes get any lawsuits whatsoever, it really doesn't fit, yeah, so.
No, I don't think anybody on either side wants to go into lawsuits.
But, but again, if, uh, you know, if you follow Butch's recommendations in the letter, then, you know, that would go a long way towards thinking that you guys are paying attention to the, you know, building inspector and his wishes.
I mean, it's an interesting case, if they own property, they can't get to other ones going off Schoolmaker.
They can have a task court.
Thank you.
I think that's.
The board did discuss the recommendation in one of the meetings that we had, cuz this has been carried out over a couple.
But Butch knows that there's wellens and there's no road going through there, no how, no where, no time.
And that's why I was saying, protocol and process, this came here as a site planner review, looked at it as a site planner review, I did, yes. We're all just saying the same thing, yes.
I'm not, I'm not beating on Melissa. But I know it's frustrating.
All right, we'll send it back.
Okay, thank you for your time.
We'll have a few letters, we'll have a few.
Well, I.
Please, if you can, call.
Thank you.
Let's see, you got, uh, board members, the questions, what do we need right now? Are we ready for German?
Stay for two seconds. Okay, second.